This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we'll call the meeting to order at 7:10. And we'll start with the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any corrections or additions to the agenda? Someone like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
So I would like to.
Oh, okay, I'll second it.
All right, give it to Renee. Tom seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to our November minutes. Thank you Renee for putting these together. Does anyone have any corrections to those?
Was I, I realized I was absent, but I believe I was excused.
Yes, you had something at the fire station.
Yeah, so it marked me as absent.
Yeah.
Not that I need to get into graduate school or anything.
That doesn't count against your final grade. We just have to say who is here or not.
Good, okay, thank you.
Um, so I think the minutes look okay, but did you guys have anything to add to that?
No, they look good.
Yeah.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve our November minutes?
I make a motion to approve the November minutes.
Thank you Sarah.
I'll second it.
Thank you Tom. All in favor?
I, I don't want to monopolize this if anybody else wants.
Go for it. I did that earlier. Uh, motion carries. Our planning calendar, I feel like I've lost track of everything. We're going to review Kim's contract tonight. I missed sending out things to do, Kim's performance evaluation for this meeting, so we'll do that in January. But did you guys all see that email in addition to the meeting email?
Yes.
And while I'm thinking of that, did anyone open the performance evaluation document yet?
No.
Okay.
I opened the PDF. I couldn't open the other one.
Okay, hopefully it's blank. It was blank on my computer and it had like text boxes that you can type in. And whoever, I don't remember Tom, if I got that document from you or Scott, but anyway, I can't alter the document, but I could fill it out. But when I sent it to Rebecca and she opened it, it had all of the things that she filled out last year. So we were afraid that I accidentally sent that to everyone. But when I look on my computer, it's still blank. So hopefully Rebecca's computer just remembered what she did last year. But anyway, if I need to do something else with that, let me know.
So Nat, if we print that out and fill it in by hand?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Yep, we like that.
But I can try and figure out what to do with the electronic version again, if that's easier for people.
Not on my account.
I, I think I did it electronically and sent it back to you.
Okay, I'll look for that. I don't think I saw it, but I could have overlooked it also. When do you need it back? Um, I picked a day in the middle of December.
Sixteenth, I think you said.
Yeah, okay. Just so I have time to get it together before our January meeting. Um, okay, so we have that coming up. Um, Renee, you're scheduled to go to the town board meeting this month on the 21st.
Yes. Do I have to sign up or anything, or is it?
There's, if you go to the town website, there's a link. Usually the link works when you click on it. It will automatically send you an email with the link. Last month, it didn't work, so I just sent an email to the town clerk.
Okay, thank you.
But either one of those ways. We have our holiday market coming up. I have the wrong date on our planning calendar. On the 20th, Sunday, the 20th, so we'll talk about that later in the meeting. Our board meeting for January will be on the 5th. And I think that's all the big stuff coming up. In January, well, well, I think I moved. Yeah, that's all that's coming up. The performance evaluation and the next board meeting and the holiday market. Also in January, we need to send a notice to the East Wick and post on our website and Facebook, our board meeting schedule for the next year.
I have on my calendar that there's a board meeting, a town board meeting on the 21st. If Renee's going to that, I think that's fine. I didn't know because of the ambiguity of my own note to myself, if I was supposed to go to that. But if Renee's gonna go to that, I'd be pleased to strike it.
I am.
Okay.
I can have the day off.
So struck. Thank you very much. When's the workshop? That's the preceding Monday, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, cuz I'm the, oh yeah, I'll deal with this on the survey when we talk about that.
Okay, that's the planning calendar. So Kim, we're ready for the director's report.
All right. Let me find it cuz it's in buried. So our, oh, I just realized I made a mistake. So November program, we just had book club, which we are still getting it relatively, you know, a nice group of people coming together, I think, Sarah.
Yeah, I love it.
Next month or coming up, we're gonna have our next book club meeting on December 15th. We're reading The Stars and the Blackness Between Them. There are copies at the library if anyone's interested in joining us. I'm going to be doing some story time, take home kits. I'm gonna try and do one a month where we give away free books to a family. And then they'll have different crafts to do that go along with the book. So kind of like a take home, take home story time, cuz we can't do story time at the library. We are gonna do our community ornament project, which I'm gonna try and get all the materials set up for that by, in two days, which will be no problem. We're doing a holiday fund market fundraiser, and then we're doing a blood drive on the 28th. So I'm gonna have signs going up for the blood drive soon from the Red Cross. Circulation was down slightly by 9% from November. Oh my goodness, I must have been really tired when I sent this out. Um, you can see all the statistics that are in there. I didn't add a huge amount to the collection in November because I just received a whole shipment of adult books, so that's all gonna be put in tomorrow. So we'll have a whole, lots of new stuff for everybody to see for that. Um, for our registered borrowers, it went down a little bit from last month because some patrons' records expired. So I thought I would show you exactly what it is that we have. So if you look at it, we have our patrons without expired cards, so the cards that are still active, we have 1,095. But we have a total of 1,661 patrons registered to the library. There's 566 people who have expired cards. So, you know, it depends on, we're gonna, there's really not much we can do in terms of the expired cards. But if someone comes in and they still have an expired card, we can re-register that, not re-register, but just update their card and they're all set and ready to go again. Things have been pretty steady with the visitors and people still doing curbside pickup. We do have people who don't wanna come into the building at all, so we just put things out on the table in the foyer. And then we have people who wanna come in and use the fax machine or the photocopier or a computer for a few minutes. So, but it seems like everyone's been doing really well. I don't think we've had any issues with mask wearing or, you know, people staying, overstaying their welcome or whatever. You know, everyone's been very good. Um, I attended the DA meeting on November 20th. The big thing to know about is that UHLS has approved two different budgets for themselves. One is if they don't get, if there isn't a reduction in state aid, which their state aid is like a quarter of their budget. So, or might have been three quarters. Uh, it's a lot. Whatever it is, it's a lot. So they're anticipating a 20% reduction, so they've done a budget with the 20% and without the 20%. If the state cuts their budget, we don't get funding, the Upper Hudson is going to have some, there's gonna be reductions in services. So it's gonna affect us pretty greatly because they're talking about putting us down to two to three deliveries a week instead of our normal five. Usually we get five delivery, one, a delivery a day. And for interlibrary loan. And with this, they're gonna have to cut services for the delivery service, which will save them $100,000. But it means that a lot of us out here in the far reaches of the service area, we're gonna end up probably going down in terms of getting service or getting the deliveries. So that's gonna be a difficult thing for us to figure out how to work with because it's gonna mean delays in getting books to people or items or whatever. And it's also gonna mean that we're gonna end up with more stuff to hold on to. Right now, we're putting out about two bins a day. So if we get two bins a day and we can't have them actually be delivered or picked up until, say, Wednesday, then we're gonna have six bins of books that are just hanging around the library. So it's gonna be something we're gonna have to figure out. They don't anticipate this continuing year to year. They're just like, let's just get through 2021. But they are hopeful that New York State will at least get some kind of funding, then they won't have to cut that. The other thing that would be cut is that we'd have, we wouldn't have our rotating collections anymore. We get rotating collections, which are audiobooks, large print books and DVDs. And we get those collections to add to our, to our collection. So a lot of the times, we won't have any of the materials that are in those collections. We keep them for three months so our patrons can have access to stuff, so we're not buying lots and lots of new stuff. And then it just keeps rotating so that we can, it's just one more feature to add to what we have available for everybody. Those are gonna be cut entirely. There's not gonna be any new items added to any of those rotating collections. They'll still rotate them, but it's all gonna be old stuff. It's, nothing's gonna be new. So it's gonna be a little bit tough, I think, for all of us to deal with if, if it does happen. Bye Ed.
Hi Ed.
So, bye Ed.
Kim, it would also mean when you do get the deliveries, that it would be extra checking in.
Yeah, exactly. It's gonna be a lot. So, I mean, we wouldn't, might have to be where you, like, one person's checking in two bins and then the next day we wait and then another person checks in another two bins. So it's just gonna be, the biggest thing is it's gonna be longer wait times for our patrons. So I don't know how we're gonna manage it, but we will figure it out. Hopefully it won't be too bad. Um, so that's what's going on with Upper Hudson. Oh, and then there are also gonna be some cuts to programming. But we don't have a ton of programming that we take part of with them, so that shouldn't affect us too much. Um, I attended this, the board meeting with Melanie on last month. Went fine. Still doing the budget. I sent everybody the new budget materials just a couple minutes ago. I realized I hadn't updated things. Sarah reached out to Ollie and we've heard back from them, so I'm gonna start continuing, getting in touch with them about doing some virtual online programs for adults, for veterans, and see what we can do with that. I'm starting up the online market right now. I'm hoping to have everything up and running in a few days. So far, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I've got eight people who are interested in selling items from felted crafts to jewelry to pottery to candles and soap. So it will have a decent amount of extra stuff to sell as well as our normal bake stuff. But we have to, that's the other thing I'm gonna need is information from everybody about what people are donating to or making for the sale. But I guess we need that later. The food pantry and the fire department and the library have been trying to organize toy distribution. So Rebecca and Sarah and everybody, we've been trying to make sure that that's gonna happen. Um, the fire department is collecting toys from Dollar General. And they've got over 300 toys apparently already. We'll be getting toys from Rensselaer County. Um, and then we just have to figure out how to combine them all and then how to get them to the kids that need them. So that's what we're working on right now, is trying to come up with the process by which we're gonna get, distribute everything to everybody. The fire department's been talking about doing it on a, like, taking a fire truck and going around, but I don't know if that's actually something that will happen, but it sounds like it would always be fun to me. But we'll keep everybody posted on that. And we are gonna continue to do our mitten tree this year. Normally, we donate all of the mittens and the gloves and hats and everything to the food pantry. But because they're not letting people into their building, they don't feel comfortable sending, doing anything for those. So we're going to probably just give them to the schools and see if anybody in the schools needs them. And try and give them out when we do the, when we do the toy giveaway. So I think
Kim.
That's it.
You know, will there eventually be a meeting for the toy giveaway to figure out organizing?
I would assume that we're going to. Right now, Jen's just trying to get all the list of all the people that are gonna be interested in it. So, but I can see if we can, like, coordinate something so we can all be together and talk about it and figure it out.
Yeah, once they decide how, it's, it's a very different job to have parents come pick it out as opposed to wrapping them all and.
I wasn't thinking about wrapping anything. I think that that's a huge amount of work.
Yeah.
If you're wrapping 300 gifts plus whatever we get, which is
Right.
50, if not more.
Yeah, that was a little worried.
I think Jen mentioned something about the dollar store donating wrapping. I didn't know what the plan was for that, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
And Anita was muttering something this morning about Dave, the chief, talking about needing people to wrap stuff. So that would probably be a big relief if, if indeed parents are going to come pick it up, that they can be responsible for wrapping stuff. Cuz 300, whatever, is a lot of stuff to wrap. So.
Okay. I'll, I'll contact Jen tomorrow and, and try and come up with something a little bit more concrete about how things are gonna be done and see what we can figure out. So I think that that's pretty much it for my, for my, um, director's report.
That sounds good. I like your program ideas with the story time pickup bag and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hope we can get some kids. I've got, I ordered, I think I have 10 books, so that would be 10 families that we could give a book out to and then give the program materials to go to, so hopefully that'll work.
Sorry, are you gonna put a Facebook post up about this stuff?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
I'll put it on the youth committee page then.
Okay. And the ornament project, if anyone wants to join us with it, I've got enough ornaments and we have acrylic paints that I'm gonna be able to give out and some brushes if people don't have any of that, so we can get some ornaments and decorate them and then try and, I might have to shellac them because I realized that if they're wood, it might, they might deteriorate in the snow and rain. Well, we have snow, but we'll definitely get it, get it up and outside and decorating around the building a little bit so that we can have something nice.
I'm not sure shellac's waterproof. Might be better with the urethane or something like that.
Yeah, the varnish, the varnish, that's why.
Yeah. Anyhow, I have a nice person for your selling. How does she contact you to set up the?
Email.
Email, just right to you?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Soon is better, too.
Okay, tomorrow.
Great.
All right, thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Um, next on the agenda is just talking about where the library is at with our reopening plan, which like, things are going well. Have you or the staff had any different feelings since the last time we talked to Kim?
Not really. I think everybody's still pretty much where we were the last time. I think in the next couple of weeks, if we see a big outbreak with after Thanksgiving like they're predicting, then it might be a little different. But Steven Town really doesn't have a lot of people who are getting sick. Neither does Berlin and Lebanon and all the areas around us, so I think that it's still okay.
Okay. And it seems like patrons are following safety protocols still and we haven't had any complaints, so.
None. Everybody's been incredibly good and everyone knows to wear a mask coming in the building. Everyone stops and, well, almost everyone stops and uses the hand sanitizer coming in. We haven't had any issues with people saying, you know, oh, well, why do I have to leave after half an hour? Almost everybody's like, well, let's just get in and get out and leave, so it's been going good.
That's good. So we'll keep things where they are with that.
Yep.
Sarah, are you ready for the treasurer's report?
Sure, yeah. Um, so I think we can officially now say that the Capcom account is up and running and working, working properly. The balances as of today are a little over 5,000 in checking, 47,344 in the money market account, 18,000 plus in special projects, a little under 8,000 in the Zook account, and 23,864 in the scholarship account. So we have 101,950 and 87 cents at Capcom. We still have a balance at TD in checking because we had some outstanding checks that we wanted to make sure cleared. So we have 3,054 there as of today. And once all the checks have cleared and we're sure that they've cleared, we'll be writing a check to ourselves to go over to Capcom. So the total balance altogether is $105,005. And I think there will be additional money coming in from the annual fund drive as well. So I would say we're, we're doing pretty nicely.
Especially given it's the end of the year.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I've got, I have a bunch, I have a whole bunch of annual appeals that I have not put into the system app. So I didn't, haven't actually put them into the accounts, so we have $2,205. And then we just got another one, two, three, four, five, six more donations just from the email that I sent out this afternoon about donating to your local library for Giving Tuesday. So there's gonna be at least another couple hundred bucks from there, too. So we're doing pretty good for the annual appeal.
Yeah, that's exciting and nice to see. And I don't know, I feel like we're always nervous every year, but this year you especially don't know what to expect, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so surprisingly good. It's, it's really great. Kim, did you get the credit card?
Not gotten the credit card yet.
Okay, so he said to call him tomorrow and he would put a rush on a new one if we didn't have it by tomorrow. So I'll just, I'll do that in the morning.
Okay, that sounds good.
Does that mean that there's a credit card floating around somewhere?
I don't know what it means. I have no idea why, why it took so long and he doesn't seem to either, so.
Yeah.
So he just thinks that it hasn't been sent yet or that, like, it got lost in the mail?
He hasn't offered his conjecture to me.
If I were him, I wouldn't either.
Well, we'll hope somebody else isn't running around with the library credit card.
That would be nice.
I can figure that out eventually.
This kind of, I, I forgot to mention that to everybody. This kind of goes along with treasures cuz it's about money. Apparently, we were supposed to have filed with the New York State Comptroller's Office for tax cap, tax cap law. And we had to put in how much we're getting from taxes. So obviously, it's the 95,000, so I was able to do it for 2019, 2020, and then 2021. In the future, it has to be done before, legally, it has to be done before we adopt our budget, which we were fine because I was able to do it before we adopted our budget. But it's gonna have to be done in the future, so it's just one of those things that I wanna kind of put on record that we need to make sure we do every year before we adopt a budget. I think it'll only be that, whatever it is that we're doing, it's only gonna be an issue when we wanna ask for a raise in our tax money. Because right now, they're, you know, it's saying, oh, you've only, you haven't used all of your tax cap money that you can use. Or, so we're, you know, just because it's staying at the 95, it doesn't really matter. But it'll matter later if we decide to ask for more.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of surprised by that actually, since the amount that we get is voted on. I would think that 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 actually makes me nervous cuz we've kind of been planning like 10 years down the road, well, ask for an increase. But if we can only ask for an increase of whatever the tax cap is, you can't just make up a big amount at one time.
No, yeah, you couldn't. You would have to fall within the tax cap law. Even, it depends, it's still a levy, you know, a tax levy, so it has to stay on the, in, in there.
Well, that's something that we'll have to think about in our planning for the future. But I'll add that to our calendar for next year.
That'd be good, yeah, in, maybe for like October, I think is usually when it should be done.
It's duly noted by the planning committee.
I just parenthetically wanna thank Sarah for picking up seamlessly on being a treasurer. That was all essential, straightforward. You'd obviously done some work on prepping it. It's very reassuring.
Thanks, huh?
I agree.
You're welcome.
And it's been a lot of extra work for her trial by fire into that position since we were banks and had a hard time transferring money. And Sarah was running around one day in an emergency trying to get the money into the new bank. And we can't figure out where our credit card is. So it's been a lot of extra work in the short time that Sarah's taken over.
I remember when I was treasurer, the Berkshire Bank used to say, America's most exciting bank. And I was, you know what, I don't want excitement. I just wanna know that when I make a deposit, it's gonna get recorded. When I write a check, it's gonna get paid. I don't want excitement, so I salute you.
From your bank, it's excitement, yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
That's funny.
A little like, America's most exciting septic company. I wouldn't want excitement from that either.
Um, so before we move on to voting on the budget, does anybody have questions about the treasurer's report? All right, so, um, did everybody get the updated budget Kim sent out just like 10 minutes before the meeting started?
Yeah, sorry. Sorry about that. I forgot to update the actual amount that we've had in our 2020 line, so. It's now all up to date.
Ken's been doing a lot of calculations the last few days. We had a budget meeting yesterday and added a few things. And she's been cleaning stuff up and figuring out her new bank account. Plus, it's, the month just ended yesterday, since today is the first, so she had a lot of work to do to get ready for the meeting tonight.
Yep.
Um, but our budget basically looks the same as it did at our last meeting except for we added in a separate line for saving for repairs and put the $2,500 in that we voted on at the last meeting. And we also added in a separate line for a marketing budget, which was an idea that Sarah brought up. And Sarah, Kim, Jen and I kind of tossed around some ideas of marketing is kind of a place where we've just tried to be very frugal over the years and do things as inexpensively as possible. But we've been talking about printing brochures for new people in town and new people coming to the library and maybe giving out magnets with the phone number and business hours. And just, we actually discovered that we can print nicer flyers for free. When we started this conversation, we thought that we might invest some money in a membership to have more access to flyer making materials. But we had a couple other ideas, too, like getting new bags for the library to give out to new people. we had a couple other ideas, too, like getting new bags for the library to give out to new patrons, selling mugs again, different things like that.
And the research.
Yes, and research if we do smaller surveys in the future to get more specific ideas on programming and services that people are looking for from the library. So we added in fifteen hundred dollars for that as well. But otherwise, the budget looks the same as it did last month. So before we put that to a vote, does anyone have any questions or comments about the proposed budget for twenty-twenty-one?
I just think it's a good idea, given something that happened that was just discussed that I can't exactly remember what it was. But it sounded like somebody was keeping track of, are we spending all the money that we're getting from taxes? And I think if, if, if nobody's keeping track of it, it sounds like that statistic is available. So I think whatever we can do to demonstrate that we're doing that, even if we're putting it in another account and not spending it, is all to the good. Because as far as our representation to the, to the public would go, we're using all of this. It's not like it's gonna be left over. It's like it's being put to use. So that's a long way of saying I'm happy that there's these other things that are set up. And we're now doing things that we should have done ten or fifteen years ago. But, you know, good, I, it's a great direction that we're moving in, so.
So Tom, just so you can see, if we put up the financial statement that I make for the public, which is like a condensed version of the, of the massive one that we get every month. And if you look at it, we just hit in our expenses ninety-five thousand dollars. So we have ninety-five thousand, four hundred and two dollars and one cent is what we've spent this year on all of our expenses. So we can say, yep, we just spent the ninety-five grand. We're all good to go.
No, I haven't. I, I confess, I didn't, I felt very good because I got all the material into a folder for this meeting. I haven't read it yet, but by God, it's in one place and I know where to find it. So thank you for pointing that out and.
I just noticed the number this afternoon when I was putting it together and I saw it all added up to ninety-five. I was like, oh, we made it. We used all of the town money. We're, now we're going, you know, forward, so.
Yeah, so we're four hundred bucks over.
Yep.
That's good. I mean, it doesn't look like the fix was in if it was ninety-five and we spent ninety-five, but this is.
And that's not including what we're gonna spend this month, so we're all good.
Yeah, okay, great. Like it. Very nice.
All right. So if there's no other comments, would someone like to make a motion to adopt our twenty-twenty-one budget?
I'll do that.
Yeah, okay. I'll second it.
Thank you, Tom. All in favor?
Hi.
Hey.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Sarah and Kim, especially for all of the work that you put into this.
Problem. I'll put it up on our website, hopefully, in the next few days.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we'll move on to committee reports. First on the agenda is fundraising. I'm not sure where Scott is tonight. I was expecting him to be here. But as Kim said earlier, if you have not sent her a picture of what you're going to be making for our holiday market with the price, and if you have a number, like a limit of how many you want to sell, Kim needs that information as soon as possible to get that up on the site. Otherwise, I'm not sure if there's any outstanding issues for the fundraiser. Do you know, Kim?
Not that I know of. I'm, I've got, like I said, I have a bunch of people who have said they'll do stuff. Renee, were you gonna do earrings? I saw on your email that you said you had some.
Yes, I do have some pairs, but they're all different. And I was thinking about that and I don't want to make your life stressful.
Let's see how I go with getting everybody else's stuff up and then we'll go from there. But I should be able to do it. I don't think it's too big of a problem.
If not, I can redirect pretty easily, so.
Okay.
Let me know.
All right. I also, sorry, one more question for Renee. You said something about doing raspberry cheesecake cookies. Is that still on the plan or were you gonna do something else?
We weren't sure if those needed to be refrigerated or not.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, no, not for now, no.
Okay. Okay, so.
You're okay with the spicy cashews being my thing, or did you want me to do those cider maple dumplings?
Well, I want you to do the dumplings so I can try them because I'm, make them anytime soon.
I can do both. I just don't think I can do too many of those cider maple dumplings, maybe like two batches. And I think if I remember correctly, that it makes something like fourteen dumplings, so, or twelve, so we could do, sell them in sixes and there would be four sets of six or something.
Okay, yeah. I mean, we can put in a limit on how much, you know, once they're gone, they're gone. So we don't have to have it so that we're selling, you know, twenty or seventy things of bread like we did last time.
Yeah, I do not want any part of that.
Um, okay. So if everyone, if you just want to let me know how much we want to sell and, you know, what the price and all that, that would be great.
Yep.
So I just need to get the confirmed items. So, Tom, I have Anita doing pies, six pies, and then thumbprint cookies. Is that still accurate?
I'm sure the six pies is accurate. I don't know about the thumbprint cookies and she's not here because she's at the fire department, drill night.
Okay.
But they were apple, apple, blueberry, or pumpkin, I guess, were the three flavors. And she's willing to do, she's willing to do six pies. We twist her arm, she might do thumbprint cookies.
Six pies sounds like enough work.
That's a lot.
Yeah, she can knock off a pie very quickly. I never baked anything in my life, but she just conjures up pies.
Rebecca, were you gonna do the hot chocolate things, pops?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Those are really cute.
Or how much? We had talked about selling them individually or in like a four-pack, maybe.
Okay.
Like as a choice.
I have been derelict and I have not spoken to the cook, so I don't have an answer yet.
Okay.
I'll get on to that tonight. We end early enough, hint, hint.
And then I just have to touch base with Scott about what he's gonna do. I know he's doing honey and syrup and something else, but I'm not sure what. So I'll send out an email or ask him to send an email out such that we can make sure we're doing everything. And Melanie, I've got you down for the English muffin bread.
I didn't come up with a price for that, though. What, do you remember what Scott was charging for a loaf of bread last time?
Um.
How much, Ed?
I think it was four dollars.
I think it may be more than that.
Yeah, I think it was like six or something.
Do I have it? I'm sure I have it somewhere in here.
Maybe just go with whatever that was.
Five dollars for the bread.
It was good, though.
Split the difference, though.
Yes, I was thinking the same thing.
So five dollars for Melanie's bread?
Works for me.
Just disappeared. Oh. Since we're doing this, anyone else have any ideas about the pies? I don't know what's a good price is to sell a pie for.
I have no idea.
I feel like pies go for a lot.
Oh, pretty expensive, right? It costs a lot to buy a pie.
Like ten bucks, fifteen bucks.
I was gonna say like eighteen.
Oh, eighteen? Geez.
Holy smoke.
It's a fundraiser. Scott always says charge more. All right, go with fifteen so we don't scare people away.
Yeah, I guess if we go with fifteen, that's easier to pull out of your wallet than eighteen because.
Well, remember, this is all gonna be online, so nobody has to.
Oh, yeah. We're in the twentieth century. No, the twenty-first century, son of a bitch.
Sarah, was the price we did for the cashews the last time okay?
Yeah, let's just stick with that.
And I think the apple cider or the apple maple dumplings, I don't know how you want to do those.
Yeah, I think that, that we should sell them in half dozens. But I've never even had them, so I don't, like, I have absolutely no idea what we should be charging for these things. Are they good? Are they good? I don't know. Maybe I'll give it a shot quickly to make some and then I'll let you know what they should go.
I guess batches, batches of six make more sense than batches of four, I suppose.
Yeah.
Okay, because it's a half dozen. Yeah, you're right.
I feel like those sound like a lot of work, right? Can we charge fifteen dollars for a half dozen, kind of like a pie?
Hmm. Well, how much did we sell muffins for last time? That would, that would help us.
Yeah, I just don't really know how big they are. Like, I don't have a good sense of what these things are gonna be like, which is. Maybe twelve bucks.
So half a dozen muffins we did for ten dollars last time.
Okay, but because this is high-end ingredients with the cider and the maple syrup, we're going twelve.
Twelve, perfect. Okay.
About twelve fifty.
Sure, let's do twelve fifty. I was gonna do some chocolate-covered pretzel rods that I make with like little decorations and stuff. And then I was thinking, I might just do some cookies as well, but I have to figure out what kind, so. So yes. So if everyone just wants to let me know if you have any changes or thoughts or whatever for the last few people, that'd be great.
So did I make a representation that Anita was good for thumbprint cookies or no?
I have a question mark next to it, so if you want to let me know.
So I'll ask her, yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
And if anyone needs help eating the samples that you're making for pictures, I'm happy to assist.
Me, too.
All right. Thank you, Kim, for organizing that.
Yes.
Um, Sarah, do you want to give us an update on where we're at with the survey project?
Yep, absolutely. Um, so we have sent emails out to all of the sister organizations sort of explaining what we're interested in doing. I've already had a phone call, Jen and I, with Bonnie French from the Food Pantry. And she can be quite blunt and, and brusque, and she did not say no. So to me, that was, that was a big plus. She said she would get back to me in a week. We also have, I, I reached out initially to Bill and he said it should really be Larry Eckert and PJ Roder that we contact because PJ's liaison for the library, which I was unaware of. But so, so sent the email to them and they both seemed quite interested. We have a call set up for the seventeen because PJ has a bunch of things he has to attend to. But they, they sounded pretty positive. So that's the good news. And then actually, I went for a walk, a winter walk, and Mona Berg stopped and said, I hear you're, you're doing a survey and we're very interested in it, Tom. This is the Steven, the new Steventown Community Committee or whatever you guys are calling yourselves. What are you calling yourselves?
Steventown Community Association.
Association. And she seemed very hot to trot about it as well. And I said that you had already contacted Dennis about it. And I don't know what, how that went.
Do you want me to, is now an appropriate time to?
Yes.
Okay. The, in our talking with people, it seems like a common complaint or remark that, that people have is nobody from Steventown buys our stuff. Our market is all outside of Steventown. Braveheart Books has a national market. Nobody from Steventown buys their stuff. And that seems to be a common complaint. So if that, if it were possible that there were data that could answer that question, which I'm not exactly sure what that is.
Organizations that are in the survey now aren't really selling anything. They're all not for profit. So it would have to be a, an additional question about.
Well, that would raise another, that raises another question, which we're quite aware of, is that we're not even a bona fide organization yet. We're, we're an idea that's looking for traction and talking to people. And we don't have money to contribute to this. And the question that I was wondering about, which I would bet that Scott Weiner would raise, were he here, is, is it a breach of our fiduciary responsibility as a board to be spending our own money supporting other not-for-profits that weren't contributing anything? Now, if the town were willing to cough up a good chunk of this, we might be able to put a question in there, perhaps, that would get at the issue of how do we get more people to buy stuff internally within Steventown? But I guess we're, I guess right now, as things stand, we're, we're, the, the Steventown Community Association is happy to participate. We're not sure we have any money to contribute. And I'm not even sure how we would represent ourselves, where we'd want a spot on the survey. So that's not a lot of use. And I'm also wondering if the public would be pissed at the library having bought this large survey for other people who are not library, if the town's not kicking in something for it, so it makes it doubly important.
Yeah, I, I think our thinking was that the, the library wasn't going to be purchasing the research alone. It would be a joint effort with the organizations. And if the organizations weren't kicking in, they wouldn't be in the survey. That's how I was viewing it.
Okay, how about access? Would they still have access to the data?
Oh, I think, I kind of think not. I mean, I, I think we should just sort of find out if people are really interested in, in the information and if they like the idea first before we get too nitty-gritty about the, the money thing. But to me, it doesn't make sense to, to request that people kick in and then the groups that didn't kick in get the same information that the groups that did kick in. Yeah, that just doesn't seem to, like, I wouldn't be happy if I was an organization that kicked in, put it that way. So it's kind of a sensitive thing, you know?
So that position depends on how many people are willing to kick in something.
Yeah, and the more, the more that are willing, the less it is for everybody as well.
Yeah.
So that was another thing is, um, speaking with Jen, we, we came up with another way to get the cost down because her experience using a company called Printing for Less that uses this Everytown Direct mailing option, she was able to get the print. Uh, she was able to get the print cost down to six hundred and eighty-two eighty-nine, so that plus the survey programming hosting verbatims and cross tabs, which is two thousand eight hundred and five, brings it to under three thousand five hundred. So, you know, if we had six organizations, then we would, they they would be each paying about six hundred.
Yeah.
Or if the town is is willing and wants to, you know, contribute more than that, then then we could slice, you know, even smaller slices for each of the um, organizations, making it probably a much easier thing for them to do.
Okay.
So that's kind of where we are with that. Um, I have not heard anything back from everyone on the clave, and I've emailed three times, so I'm not quite what to make of that, and and I have, um, I I sent Anita a suggestion that maybe Jen and I could uh, come to one of the Tuesday meetings, maybe even this coming Tuesday to sort of talk about it for the SVFD, and I have already talked to Dave Corlou about it, and he said he would he would follow up with with Brett as well, so.
Okay.
Um, and then just lastly, I included sort of a cheat sheet in case people are talking to, I know everybody sort of knows some of the people in some of these organizations, and if you happen upon them, there's a cheat of the things that we would learn from the survey that, um, you might just wanna take a look at and memorize. Uh, I'm not gonna go through them, but it but it's there, and the updated survey is there as well. Uh, so there's a fifth draft that's attached to the document that I sent around. And the other thing I wanted to talk about, and now I don't really need to cuz Kim already covered off on it, was I did hear back from Berkshire Ali about uh, the veteran speakers idea, and there's a lot of really great options for us to consider, and that's that's covered in in that document as well.
Thank you, Sarah, and welcome, Scott.
I apologize for my lateness. Things are rather crazy around here. I may be going to the hospital again for Liz. So in any event, it's a little wacky, and I was up all night last night driving back and forth, so.
With your daughter?
Yes.
Is she okay?
She's having a baby.
Oh, that I realized, but I wanted to make sure this was the right time.
Well, that's the, it was a little early last night at the wee hours of the morning, so she was there. I got back. They called me again to pick her up, so we picked her up, and now the contractions are much closer, so. She's waiting here from the doctors as to whether they wanna come. I keep on saying you're an hour away from the hospital. It's like not screw around.
Yeah.
Anyway, I apologize for the ambulance.
Uh, well, I know medical personnel around here, but I, you know, just saying.
Well, thank you for being here amid all of that. Um, and thank you, Sarah, for continuing to coordinate everyone around the survey and
Alright. Amen.
The speakers from Ali sound really exciting and promising. That was a good connection to make.
Yeah, I had no idea that there are all these free YouTube classes, so there's one on the Vietnam War, there's one on World War Two, which we could just let the that's know about, um, that they could access anytime on YouTube. And what else we do?
So it sounds like next steps for the survey is we're still just working on contacting the different organizations and finding interest levels.
Yeah, and I think the conversation with Larry Eckert and PJ is gonna be real important, so, um, oh, you know, I I probably won't wait until the next meeting to just update everybody on where where we are after that.
That makes sense. Alright, any other questions around that?
Do you want me to go to the public, to the workshop meeting and say anything, or is it better just done offline with you talking to Larry and PJ?
What what workshop meeting?
The pre, the pre the town has a workshop meeting before the proper town meeting that's public, that you have more access to the council people.
Let's let's keep it separate for now.
Sounds good to me. Like it? Good? Sold.
Sold.
Um, so Scott, we already talked about the upcoming holiday fundraiser, and basically, Kim is just collecting pictures and prices and amounts from people. Um, we think we have everything under control there, but just to check in with you, is there anything else we should be doing? And you're still on mute. You have to unmute yourself.
What are you doing on the craft side?
We're doing good. Um, excuse me, we have, what did I say, nine people now? So we have someone's doing soaps, someone's doing jewelry, felting kits, um, I don't know what this other person's doing, handmade bags, bibs and sachets, pottery, earrings. So we have nine people so far who are interested in in doing stuff, so I'm gonna be able to, I'm gonna try and get everything up on the website as soon as, I wanna, I told everyone by Tuesday I'd like to, or Wednesday, just wanna have everything up and ready to go, but.
Okay, I spoke to Steve Beach. He said he'd do that. Um, he's got wooden boxes and maybe little kneeling stools and various things. I'll send you the pictures of what I took from him.
Okay.
And we'll see what prices he wants to charge.
Do you, does he have a phone number that I can get in touch with him so I can just talk to him about it, or?
Um, sure, I think. I'll find it. I usually contact him by email or go down to New Lebanon where he sells his stuff.
Is he the one who set up right in front of where that, um, the red building, the old depot used to be? It was the Hello, New Lebanon or Explorer? I don't remember. It was some kind of an open
Actually, he usually sets up in front of Meisner's. Uh, at least he's been doing that for the past several months.
Okay.
Saturdays or Sundays.
Yeah, his stuff is great.
Yeah, it's really nice.
Do you have his, I mean, I could email him too. I just wanna be able to get in touch with him as soon as possible so I can get his stuff up on the website and start it.
Um, yeah, I'll send you the contact information that I have. I think I've got his card. Uh, he gave me his cell number, but that was the wrong number. But, uh, I contacted him through his wife's email, but she responded. So I'll get you the stuff. And I'll send you the pictures. I've got a couple of decent pictures and one which probably needs to be retaken cuz it really doesn't, people wouldn't understand what they're looking at, and it's
Okay.
photography of the of the image.
Great.
That sounds really good. So, Tom, what are you making?
Anita is making pies.
That's not what I asked.
That's what I answered.
No. Okay. I guess that goes for you too, Ed. Don't give me this Polly's making routine. Yes, nice.
And Scott, you're still doing honey syrup and the, um, what was the other thing you said? What?
Granola.
Granola. Um, were you doing something else too? There was some fruit thing?
Oh, I was, yeah, I was thinking about doing the galettes.
Is that still something you're doing or no?
Um, yeah, maybe. I'm I'm really overtired at the moment, so my unbridled, normal unbridled enthusiasm is bridled. Um, I'm not doing anything at the moment. So I think the answer will be yes, but I'll get organized. Not, put it this way, it's not baking bread, which is a good thing. I can do this in less time.
That you're taking that up.
If less work, if less work, can we charge more?
If you want me to come over and help you with your production, I'd be more than happy to do that. I have never baked anything in my life, and I think that's a a track record that should not be broken.
I know, it's always time to learn.
Is anyone doing Otis in the background?
Yes. He's a, he's a funny dude. I remember when Rebecca and I and Otis went to a bank in Nassau, I think, and he was sitting on Rebecca's lap and being a little kid. I think he was playing with a fire truck or something. And, uh, some some different now.
It's way better than playing with matches.
Always moved on to pool noodles.
Alright, well, just to keep our good ahead-of-scheduleness going here.
Yep.
I think it that it sounds like we have the fundraiser under control.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I wasn't sure if you were actually frozen or.
I'm just moving slowly.
Okay. Okay, um, so we're going to move on to the executive session to talk about Kim's contract. Or we need to do that. We have to take a vote to go into executive session. Um, if the vote passes, Kim will stop the recording and remove herself from the meeting, and then I can text her when we're ready to join us again and restart the recording. Um, so would someone like to make a motion to go into executive session?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personal matters, so.
I meant to send you, Renee, ahead of time that we have to use the legal language. We're basically just gonna cut and paste the law for the reason why we're going into executive session, which includes personnel matters, so I'll email that to you after the meeting. I may have actually, let's see if I have it right here, then we can just say it. Okay, so I'll send this to you after, Renee, so that you don't have to write this all down now, but um, we're going into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. And luckily, it's going to be much happier than that sounds.
No subventions?
I think Scott needs to repeat that since he motioned first.
I'm not repeating that.
Okay.
I'll I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personal matter which, um, is authorized under the public officer's law.
I will second that elegant motion.
Thank you, Scott and Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I'm gonna stop the recording.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, welcome back from executive session. Um, so, Kim, we're happy to extend your current contract into next year for twenty twenty-one at the same rate that you're getting now for your um, salary director position and your hourly bookkeeper position. Um, like you and I talked about earlier, we're going to reduce the hours for bookkeeping since you've reduced just done so much yourself. Um, so we decided to set that at a limit of not to exceed a hundred and twenty, just in case you need extra time for summer camp or whatever, just to make sure you have a question to work with. Um, so I'll get the contract and your letter written. Um, but now that we're out of executive session, we need to make a motion to approve those two things.
I still move.
I'll second.
The whole thing.
Okay. So we're moving to extend Kim's contract through the year twenty twenty-one. Um, her director position at twenty-four hours a week and her salary at twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars per year paid in equal bi-weekly increments. And the bookkeeper position at twenty-three dollars and eight cents an hour, not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five hours a year. Um, so Ed made the motion to approve. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I would like to second that motion.
Thank you, Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I don't know if you can all hear my children in the background. Okay. Alright, so we're still on track here time-wise. Does anyone have any old business? There's no public comment. I have a few new business items. Um, it's time to do the annual Christmas bonuses. We talked about that a little bit at the last meeting, and it seemed like this group was comfortable doing that as individual trustees pooling money together for that. And I couldn't remember, Kim, do we include, um, Debbie in Christmas?
Yeah. I think
Okay. So that I put away my list. That gets us to six employees.
Jen, Lane, Jody, Vicky, me, Debbie, six, yeah, if you're including Jen, definitely. We also have Maria, but she hasn't worked since April.
She doesn't work for the library anymore.
She's still on the payroll. I don't have, she's just hasn't, I mean, there hasn't been anything for her to do because programming hasn't been happening, so.
What do you guys think? If, I feel like if she's still on the payroll, she counts.
Yeah, I'd go, I'd go with that.
Yeah, I thought she left when she left. I think she was still there.
Nope, she's, she had been doing, um, storytime and doing different programs with us, and then because of the pandemic, there hasn't been anything for her in-person to do. Um, so she's just been hanging out, waiting until we have in-person programming again.
Okay.
So with holiday cards, that gets us to fifty-three dollars per trustee. So.
Fifty-three or sixty-three?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three.
We have the same that, we have the same number of trustees as employees and then cards to go with the bonuses.
Okay.
Um, so I'm the difficult one that is hard to get money to, but if you can drop off cashier check at my mailbox or the library, that works for me.
And in your name.
Yes. And then I'll get clean fifty-dollar bills for each of the staff.
Thank you very much for doing that. I hope we don't stiff you.
Yeah, the only logistically difficult part of this is how do we all sign the cards? Usually, we do that at the meeting.
I'll sign the cards. I could leave them at the library for the next week or so.
That would be a good idea.
Okay, I'll do that.
Or else we could hire some random person and get him to sign Santa Claus or
Why don't we just get the real Santa Claus?
Okay, so I'll leave. I don't know, where should I leave those? In Kim's office so that it's not anticlimactic when they see everyone signing them at the desk?
That's fine.
Okay.
What's the combination?
Zip code.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, Rebecca and I met with Andrew, is his last name Shrum? From Andrew Property Maintenance, who actually lives two doors down from the library to talk about our dying bushes in the gardens in front of the library and get what's the word when somebody tells you how much money it's going to cost?
The.
Thank you. And estimate.
The word extortion?
Yeah. Sorry, since I looked up Kim's email, I have to find Andrew's email again.
They both start with E, Scott. Well done.
I've never spent money on landscaping, so I guess I wasn't really sure what to expect. The number surprised me a little bit, but there's two bushes that are fully dead that need to be removed. One of them is near the well pipe, which he was worried about being careful not to undo anything under the ground. There's two other bigger bushes that are growing out into the parking lot that aren't totally dead, but they're just really sticky and getting big for the space that they're in. So he recommended taking those out also. And then replacing the empty spaces with spirea, which I think Rebecca, did he say we have a couple spireas out there? There was so much bush discussion, I can't keep track. Um, and then he would take away the stuff that he removed. There's a couple other bushes that are, have dead spots, but other things are growing. So he talked about cutting back the dead spots and letting the new spots grow up. So anyway, the total for his estimate comes to $1,574, which sounded like a lot to me, but I, like I said, I've never spent money on landscaping, so I don't know if that's a lot. Um, but given that number, I think we would want to get another estimate or two and see.
And that include trimming all the bushes too?
Yes, and mulch to cover up the spaces that he disturbs. But anyway, so does any, I, does our, um, does Kirk, these guys who mow the lawn, do they do stuff like that?
I don't know, but I can ask him and find out. I mean, they do the cleanup, so I would assume that they might do something like it, but I will, um, I'll get in touch with them.
Does anyone else have an idea of someone to contact?
Who was this Melanie that gave you that estimate?
Andrew's property maintenance. He's lives, if you're looking at the library, he's actually two doors to the left of the library. You'll see like his trailer and stuff parked in his driveway.
And then there's Andrew Zima, right, who does the same?
Different guy, yeah.
He's got a landscaping business.
Yeah. I have a feeling he's probably expensive, but I don't know.
Are they replacing the dead bushes or just taking them out?
Taking them out and replacing them.
Did he itemize the estimate at all or?
Yeah. I conformed to everybody.
I'm just wondering how much of that, the new bushes were.
Um, he had, well, I was dyslexic when I read that. I thought it was three spirea shrubs, but it's two spirea shrubs. So I guess he's planning those to go in kind of the back corner where the dead bushes are. And then we had talked about putting something smaller in the front, like some kind of perennial flowers. But anyway, the two spirea shrubs come to 124.
That sounds in line. The, but do we want to get spirea if we already have spirea bushes? Should we get some variety different?
I think he suggested those because they were very low maintenance.
Something like Rhododendron would be low maintenance too. Actually, you probably get more bang for your buck with hydrangea. Longer blooming period, they like the area. A variety, a nice thing.
Winky winky.
Yeah, well, we have some very nice ones, don't we?
Are those the hydrangeas that we have along the deck?
Are there? Sarah, you probably know.
I thought that there were limelight on the deck.
Yeah, they're kind of green colored. But that's the idea. So anyway, we can work on getting other estimates. We're, we are not going to do that till this spring anyway, so we have time to work on that. Um, does anyone else have new business?
Just as a question, our neighbor does lawn mowing and stuff like that. And if I take the estimate that you sent me, that you're going to send all of us and showed it to him as a statement of the work that needed to be done, so we'd know what he's bidding on and got an estimate from him, is that, I mean, is that appropriate? I guess we don't have a sealed bid deal here. What do you think, Scott? You're the.
Uh, I think I'm going to the hospital, so. So I wasn't listening, I apologize. I was.
That's all right.
I was told to get in the car and drive. I'm gonna do that now. I'm good. Everything's good.
Good luck and stay awake.
I'll drive carefully unless I need to rush.
Pictures if you have them.
See you guys later.
Bye.
Hey, I'm not doing anything. You're driving, that's the hard part.
Exactly.
While everyone's yelling. And breathing.
So does anybody have an ethical problem with my taking somebody else's estimate? Giving to somebody saying, can you beat this?
Kind of. I mean.
It doesn't sound right.
Because it has to come in under, like all he has to do is come in a little under and it, yeah, it doesn't seem quite right.
Plus, we wouldn't mind if he gave us some suggestions too, if he's an expert.
Yeah, he might want, he might have a different idea of what would look good or, you know. So I think it makes more sense to have the person come and just give their own.
Look, look at it. Okay. All right.
And the pruning can be done in the winter if he's short of time in the spring. For the most part.
Yeah, I think he talked about doing it in the spring just because of planting of new bushes. But you're right, you can turn in the wintertime.
It waits long enough to get the other one out. The ground's going to be frozen.
Yeah.
No, I think he was doing everything in the spring.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, okay.
And I will say, we've used him for years. He removed many bushes from our, the front of our house was covered with bushes. We've used him for several different things, but.
And you've been happy with them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that goes a long way.
Yeah.
It does. That wasn't sarcasm.
Okay, I think that's coming at you now. Um, the other new business that I have is that there's a difficult change happening in my life and, um, everyone is healthy and we're going to be okay. But I feel like I need to step down from the president position. I am having a hard time managing all of, juggling all of the balls in my life right now. Um, I very much would like to still be a part of the board if everyone is comfortable with that. I think and hope that my personality isn't big enough that the next president would feel uncomfortable with me staying. So I wanted to let you guys know that. I've talked to a few of you on the board already about that and ideas of someone to step into the president position. Um, if any of you who I haven't talked to yet are interested, it would be nice to have someone with experience. I've also talked to Jen Peabody about stepping into the president position. And so we've only talked on email so far, but she's also interested. She obviously has experience working at the library and is already helping out with a lot of things that the board is working on. Um, so she's a possibility to join the board. That creates a separate problem, which is Kim appreciates having Jen as an employee. So we would need to support Kim in kind of filling in space until we can more easily recruit new employees. Kind of, we're looking probably to the springtime when things with COVID are calming down a little bit. Um, but Jen did say that she would be happy to continue doing Facebook as a board member. And Sarah and I both expressed that we would be happy to help Jen with that. So anyway, I would like to start looking for somebody to replace me in the president position and getting them ready to take over.
Jeez, how am I supposed to go to sleep after that?
I'm not running away, so it's not an emergency, but I just feel like I can't handle managing the big picture right now.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing, you know, all that you've done.
Yeah, I certainly don't begrudge you at all for doing that.
Um, so anyway, I, like I said, I would like to stay on the board if everyone's comfortable with that. Um, Sarah and I also talked about me moving into the treasurer position when we find someone else to move into the president position. Um, so we, we may be doing a little shuffling around, but if you have interest in moving into a position or Tom is laughing. Your time is almost over, Tom. I won't twist your arm for anything. So anyway, does that, does anyone have any feelings about or thoughts about Jen joining the board?
Well, I think she'd be quite capable of being on the board. She'd have, it's hard to walk in and become president if you haven't actually been on the, in the organization for a while, even if she has worked in the library. She doesn't really have much to do with our meetings. Which doesn't mean she can't do it. We're not that, you know, a complicated group and certainly not very big. So I guess it was the impact on Kim's operation would be bigger probably than on the boards.
Yeah, I guess that's the question really is how would, how would Kim feel about that? What I don't know about her and the work she's done with the fire department, which I don't know the Facebook and whatever, which is the most important part, but she willingly learned how to drive an ambulance and, um, is very capable and, and just, I think, I think she's great. I think that would be extremely lucky. I guess that's like, uh, why Biden isn't appointing Elizabeth Warren to be his secretary of the treasury or something like that, because he'd lose a senator, but assuming that could be worked out. I would think that she'd be very capable of doing it.
At first I was not so keen on the idea, only because then she would be not doing the social media stuff for us. But she did say she would be willing to continue with social media until we could find someone to do it. So that would definitely be a huge help and she's, she's great at what she's been doing. So, and I think she's not working very much. She's doing three hours per week of social media stuff. So, um, if she's comfortable with that, then I'm completely comfortable. I think she's fantastic. You know, so if there's ever issues that I think she'd be doing, do really well. I was wondering though, what about something like a co-presidency? Would that have to change bylaws in order to do that so that Melanie, you could take a step back, but still help guide her to what she needs, doesn't know yet because she has not been on the board yet?
I assume we would have to change our bylaws for that. I don't feel like I need to throw her into the president position like in the next few weeks. So, um, her and I are going to talk on Thursday. Just, it's easier to talk in person than over email. So I can, where she's at. And I also don't want to, I feel like it would be nice to have her still on the payroll around the holidays, just in case you need someone to fill in. Um, so we could start talking about things and getting her ready and have her come to the January meeting and start training her, I guess.
Well, we could do like the British do with the queen, just have you be the president mother. It works for them.
Yeah. I mean, I'll still be around and so I'm happy to help still, but.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think that will work great, but I wanted to say, Melanie, that there is no indication whatsoever that you were having trouble keeping on top of things because you seem completely on top of things. So I know that you can feel that way, but it didn't appear that way to us and it's, it's a loss for us, no matter how great Jen is, it's a loss.
Thank you.
Just so you feel guilty going out, that's.
I mean, I think because you are staying on the board and are willing to help, I don't know if we have to officially make you a co-president, just in the transition.
Right, I'm happy to just support Jen whatever way she needs as a regular board member for the treasurer, so.
Yeah, I think that's a very.
Get no credit, that's good.
Yeah, I like to get no credit in case things go wrong, then I'm off the hook. So anyway.
Is it time for my favorite motion yet?
I think so.
So move that we adhere in the meeting.
Thank you, Ed. Would anyone like to second that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sarah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We got out a little early, even with the 10 minute late start.